We're ready to go tonight. Welcome to the thirteenth regular meeting of the school committee, Lin School Committee, Thursday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, good evening, and as a preliminary matter, we will confirm attendance. Uh, in which the please confirm all the members and also the persons anticipated on the agenda uh present and can hear us.
President.
Mr. Capola.
Present.
Mr. Ford.
Present.
Mr. McEwan.
Present.
Mr. Nicholson.
Present.
Mr. Sadway.
Present.
M D.
Present.
Our committees are here in attendance, as Dr. Tutwiler.
Present.
Kim Powers.
Present.
Mr. Jerry.
Present.
Mr. McKeel.
Present.
Tony Barhouse.
Present.
And Mary drills.
Present.
All right, perfect.
Great, thank you. Uh, again, this is uh, this is Mayor Tom McGee, and I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining uh us, this open meeting of Lin School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you uh is find would can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the city website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public a- access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public ass- access does not ensure public participation unless uh such participation is required by law. This meeting will not fidget uh, this meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, Lin School Department is convening by telephone conference via conference via the Zoom platform. And this has been posted on the city's website and on the Lin Public School website. Additionally, this meeting can be viewed on local cable channels three for Comcast and thirty seven for Verizon. Uh, and please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that the p- other people may be able to see you and to take care not to shoot screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Uh, uh, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, uh, I want to just cover some ground rules for the effective and uh clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Uh, as the chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. And after they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Uh, please hold until your name is called. And please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and start uh state your name before speaking. Uh, if members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Uh, and again, finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. With that, the third regular meeting of Lin School Committee is ready to uh uh be called into um order into session. And again, pursuant to the governor's orders, uh, chapter six thirty nine of the Acts of nineteen fifty, section two A of chapter seventeen of the Massachusetts General Law, the meeting chambers will be closed to the public. And this will be, the meeting will be available by the public adequate alternative means, uh, Lin Community Television and our video recording, conference recording. With that, I know there is a flag um dawn has uh, there's a flag uh that is available to us, so I would ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting uh the United States of America, flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we have um a specific agenda tonight, so we'll go right to the agenda. Uh, first on the agenda is update on athletics. Uh, Dr. Tutwiler, I will let you uh brief the committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Uh, you know, it feels like weeks ago, um, but last week, uh, in the update on reopening, uh, there was a slide that um gave details on uh, the upcoming uh school year as it relates to athletics, high school athletics. Uh, and by way of brief reminder, um, the Massachusetts uh Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association, MIAA, and uh DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, uh, came out with a joint uh guidance for athletics for the year. Um, I'll spare you the details of all of it, essentially, uh, the language it pertains to us, to to Lin, um, essentially said that uh any community that was in the red according to the state's metric uh and starting uh the fall season in uh remote learning uh needed to postpone its fall season to what they're calling a float season or fall two, uh, which begins in February. Um, right now, or actually is uh last week, as I shared with the committee, um, all of the Northeast Conference uh principals and athletic directors had voted to shift the fall season to the fall two to sort of keep uh the family together, for lack of better expression. Um, and then, uh, you know, there was some uh parent uh feedback uh and school committees felt differently, so that is actually no longer the case. Um, there's uh sort of a, which is typical for uh this, this context in which we find ourselves. Um, moving pieces where some districts are thinking about moving certain sports to uh fall two, for example, volleyball is being discussed as being moved to fall two for the Northeast Conference. But in any case, um, as it relates to uh Lin, we are solidly um going to mo- need to move our fall season to to fall two. The good news there, uh, there are two pieces. Um, the Greater Boston League, uh, which is home to uh districts like Revere, Malden, Everett, Medford, um, they've decided to move their fall uh to fall two. Uh, so that creates a scenario that would allow us um, the, at least the two districts in the Northeast Conference, Lin and Winthrop, which are both in the red, um, to have a robust season and competition, it allows us to create a schedule. And there are a host of n- uh of other districts that are also uh postponing to to fall two, so um, that's one piece of the good news. The other piece is that Lin Tech, um, its league, the Commonwealth League, has voted to move, uh, my understanding is voted to move their uh season, fall season to fall two. Uh, so they'll be able to schedule competition and have their fall of the sports season beginning February twenty second. Um, so that's one update. The other update that I wanted to share uh really stems from uh feedback that member Castellanos uh gave in one of our update sessions, um, you know, Jesus probably in July sometime, uh, where he conveyed, um, you know, pretty adamantly that uh even if we don't have a season, uh, there still should be something uh for our our student athletes during the fall season, and we wholeheartedly agree. And so, uh, what we're in the final stages of developing is what we're calling a virtual uh sports season, um, or virtual fall sports season. Uh, and there are really two components to this. Um, coaches will uh be working with student athletes uh virtually uh to provide strength and conditioning, um, activities, some Xs and Os or strategy technique, um, you know, lessons via uh, you know, Zoom or other conference platform. Um, and I I would say the the other piece, which is equally as important, um, is providing a a a means or a mechanism uh to allow for the camaraderie and fellowship that that comes through uh being on a team, um, the mentorship that happens between a coach and student athlete uh through various team building ac- activities. And so, um, the tough part about uh this update is that uh we're, we're definitely postponing our fall season to fall two. Uh, the good news is that, um, you know, when that fall two comes along, uh, there'll be plenty of schools available for us to schedule, um, you know, competitions. And then also, we've got something in place, um, that is, uh, you know, robust and meaningful for the student athletes uh right away this fall. That's it.
Thank you. Now, member Gately.
Well, Dr. Tutwiler, I was wondering if you had a chance to ask them about the golf?
Yeah, so, um, y- y- you know, I I I, and this came up, I think, uh, last week as well. Um, I mean, we know that in New England, the end of February does not necessarily mean like thaw and you know, uh, fields or grounds that are ready for outdoor sports, um, typically in the spring. Um, you know, when spring sports begin, things like baseball, softball, it really kind of depends on what kind of winter we had um, that to determine a start date. So, uh, sports like cross country, boys and girls, uh, cross country and golf, um, you know, there, there's a question mark there as to, um, um, you know, how, when that will be able to begin, uh, if they're happening in uh in fall two. Uh, I don't have an answer, um, as to whether or not that can be moved. My general understanding is that there's not a lot of flexibility around communities that are in the red uh and starting in remote learning. Um, so I I I will continue to investigate if there's another path forward, but uh I don't think so.
One more question.
Okay.
So fall two is not going to interfere with the spring sports? Like, if everything goes well and we're back to almost a normal schedule, then spring sports will be played as they usually are?
Uh, no, spring sports actually start later. Um, to accommodate that fall two or that float season, uh, which goes from the end of February to essentially the end of April, um, the spring sports season starts at the end of April, April twenty sixth thereabout, and actually goes into July. Uh, so, uh, that's the schedules we have it thus far from uh MIAA typically. Um, the spring season, uh, you know, begins shortly after or around April vacation. Um, but, uh, no, I'm sorry, bu- prior to that, in March. Uh, but but when you add that fourth season, that float season or the fall two, it just pushes everything back, so uh it would not be a normal start to a uh spring season.
Oh, all right, so if we were playing softball or baseball, we wouldn't be in Northeast Conference? If most of those teams went to fall one, we'd be playing Greater Boston League?
Yeah, so the fall two does not interfere with the spring season at all. The, you understand what I mean?
Fall two, right.
Yep.
But doesn't it have to do with the teams, that's what I'm wondering?
Yep, so fall two is February twenty second to the end of April, April twenty fifth. And then the spring season starts April twenty sixth uh and goes to July third. So, um, let's, let's say that, uh, the stars aligned and, um, we're we're in good shape in terms of the health and safety context in the city.
Yep.
Fingers crossed, and we're, we're trending in the right direction, which is good. Uh, we would be able to compete with the Northeast Conference in the spring season.
That's all I needed to know, thank you very much.
Just a quick question, and I see member Castellanos and member Capola. Um, so I'll say it's golf, for example. Is there any ability for flexibility related to a sport like that, that no way you're going to be playing in February, March, but late March, early April, you could start? Uh, so is there an ability to have discussions related to flexibility in a, in a, in a bridge on, you know, those sports? Uh, if you're playing two sports, it could be problematic, but, um, with at least a discussion, uh, if the, you know, I think golf probably is uh, is tennis is
Spring.
Spring, yeah, okay. So golf, I guess, cross country, uh, if it's not too broad, well, can be running and probably, you know, the weather starts to change the end of February, we could probably be doing some of that potentially, but those would be the two sports. So I just throw that out there as their ability to have flex- a flexibility and have a broader discussion. Uh, I think it's some, to be honest, I'll just say it's, I think it's a bit unfair that this is just, I'm not saying we would or wouldn't be doing sports, but to just say you go in remote, y- you can't play, you, you're red, you can't play. I think it's really, um, I think it's unfair that they're completely ruling out any options, particularly if circumstances changes or communities want to try and make something happen, so um, I I would, I would suggest that we should be, and with support from, obviously, you, Dr. Tutwiler, and support from us, that we should be at least working with um DESI and MIAA to see what kind of flexibility would be there related to sports that may not, may not be able to be flexed into February and and of the, of the next year. So, just put that out there as a part of a broader discussion. Uh, member Castellanos, a member Capola. And then member Nicholson.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tutwiler. Uh, I have, um, just want to make, uh, before I ask my question, I just want to make a comment just for a lot of the student athletes, um, seniors especially, um, this is going to be a really tough fall uh for kids, uh, for football, a lot of the fall sports that are really not going to be able to, to roll out. Um, I really, you know, it's, it's frustrating. Um, it really is something that, you know, when you're a freshman at many of the high schools and you develop into your senior year, you really look forward to it, like your Thanksgiving football game, like there, there's so much traditions, so many things are are really, um, really hitting these students, and I just wanted to put my hat out there for those kids, and I, and I'm glad that we have um, a virtual fall sport mechanism to include the coaches, to provide that mentorship, because that's, that's vital, that's key. Um, and and definitely something that, um, is so vital to keeping some of these kids, um, on track with academics, um, because that's, you know, you're, you're student athlete, so I just think that's, um, we, we lose the actual motivator of being able to play the sport, but I do, you know, hopefully, um, we can keep that conversation going to see where we go, you know, if we did move out into a more positive direction. Um, so, for, you know, for staffing adjustments, are we looking at a cost savings? If we're not going to be rolling out sports for a few months, and what's that going to look like in terms of athletic trainers? Like, how, how are we supporting the staff that are not going to make, is, are we seeing some staff that will be part of the, so they won't be part of our operations till February, is that correct?
Mr. McKeel, can you help with that question?
Uh, we have, you know, I haven't seen that, I know that, uh, Mr. Gary has been developing a plan, uh, so there would be some stipend money that would be allowed to be utilized in this fall plan of virtual, uh, so there's going to be some adjustments, uh, this is a shorter season. Uh, as far as the overall staffing, the uh athletic trainers, one actually resigned, so we're down to two right now. Uh, we are hopeful that once the winter season, that they'll, they'll be, uh, you know, doing their normal duties. Uh, we haven't quite determined what they're doing at this point, there's been some discussions as far as the day to day, but until we have a plan for the fall and what their role would be on it, uh, we haven't, uh, made any adjustments at this time.
Okay, so in t- in terms of the stipends, do, what's the, is it the similar criteria? So when we have assistant coaches, like for football, for example, are they all, are they working with the head coach, like for English, is it Chris Carroll? Is he, does he have the same amount of staff to help, um, you know, how we, and so what does that numbers look like, what do those numbers look like? How many?
Well, we, we have, we have, I don't have it in front of me as far as the actual, we have a spreadsheet that we've used every year that tells everybody sport, uh, you know, then the head coach, how many assistant coaches, you know, et cetera. Uh, every year, we try to have a meeting at the end of the year to see if there's an adjustment made. For example, uh, two years ago, uh, LVTI had a huge increase in the number of students that were running track. So we actually moved and added another position for that. So we try to use the positions that way, uh, to make sure that we're putting the value of s- coaches where the most students are in sports, where the kids are participating. So that's kind of the process, there's, there's set dollar amounts and set number of positions, but as, as, as the superintendent uh said, there's a process we're trying to create right now, and how we're going to come up with what that will be. And then versus the, I think the uh fall two season might be a little bit shorter than a normal fall season, so we'll probably make some adjustments to, you know, balance everything out within the budgeted amounts.
Thank you so much, Mr. McKeel, I just, I just, I, I just don't, would not like to see, you know, when we get to this point where we figure out the process that we lose those mentors, because I think it's vital, I think we got to keep these folks, uh, interested. I don't know what a virtual system looks like yet, I know athletically, uh, obviously, you know, weight, there's, there's, there's weightlifting programs, there's a lot of different, you know, options, I guess, I, I don't know what that looks like. So when do you see that happening? When is that going to be something that comes to fruition?
Um, I know Mike Gary's working on it with the athletic directors, I, I think, you know, they had a couple of meetings on, so I haven't seen the final plan. I think hopefully, because technically next week is when our official start day for students, so I would think within a week or so after that, because we want to make sure that we have something, uh, to get the kids, you know, after their remote, after their learning session, that they could go right on to do this. So I think that's kind of the goal, is to get something quickly done.
See, I see De- I see Deputy Superintendent, uh, Ruggiero, would you uh comment on the question?
Yeah, I just want to say that, uh, Mr. McGary, Mr. McGary, Mr. McGary and I, um, have been talking a lot about this. Um, Mr. McGary working, actively working with the A.D.s to create what this would look like, and w- some of the discussions have been around the coaches using, like the captains of the teams as models uh for some of the, um, strength training or, uh, you know, routines, physical routines that they want to show students, uh, student athletes what they can be doing at home, as well as some of the, as Dr. Tutwiler said, some of the strategies of the game, um, you know, uh, the Xs and Os, so to say, and, and talking through the strategies of the game. Uh, we are working, actively working on that and hope to have that ready to go very soon. In terms of the stipends, as Mr. McHugh said, most likely what will happen is it'll be this balancing act between the time that they were doing the remote work, um, you know, in the fall, in the current fall, and the shorter season in the fall two season. So we, we believe it'll end up being kind of a balance between the two, so the stipend most likely would be the same.
So, so, one last thing, access to facilities. The access piece, obviously with us being, this is all discretion, so what are, what, uh, uh, maybe we wa- we might not have the answer now, but is, uh, Mr. Gary preparing a access to, like, to how, say, for basketball, for example, like we have a open gym, like what's the protocol, is, are we looking at a plan, is it like, say, if the numbers get better? Athletic wise, are there going to be opportunities for these athletes to have access? Even to the football, even to the fields, not the football field, obviously, it'll be one at a time, but is there going to be access opportunities? Like, as a gym, I feel like there's gym opportunities, I know there's, uh, some students, they can't afford a gym membership, you know, is, is that something that we're open to?
Certainly, if the numbers, if the numbers shift, um, you know, good enough, uh, we certainly can talk about, you know, small groups of, of athletes getting together, uh, we talked about that last spring. Um, some of that happened last spring, uh, but, you know, it's too soon to make those decisions, but certainly that will be part of the conversations, the what ifs. You know, if, if, if Lin comes out of the red and goes into yellow or better yet, green, what kinds of opportunities of smaller groups of, of athletes doing, um, you know, drills and, and, uh, kind of strength training activities on fields and in, in other facilities?
Well, thank you, De- uh, and then just like, just like one more, I know I don't want to hog the floor, but I just, I'm, I'm concerned that a lot of students, a lot, especially athletes, um, they get stuck in their houses, and they, and they, this is, this is their, this is their coping skill, this is what they do to, to survive. Like, this is not just, oh, run a couple drills, this is like, get around my, some good positive role models, some good mentors to kind of keep me off the streets, so that's why I really want to, you know, hopefully, we continue that conversation, we continue to, um, to figure out what the parameters are, make sure that we can provide that, because we also have, we have ongoing, uh, conversations about this, what we can provide building wise. We, we clearly we have needs, um, I just hope that we're, we're thinking outside the box. Thank you.
Um, let's see. Where does winter sports fall, like the basketball and the swim team group?
Um, that, if I may, Mayor, uh,
Yes, yes, Dr. Tutwiler.
Winter sports, uh, November thirtieth to February twenty first.
November thirtieth to, to February twenty third, okay.
Uh, twenty first.
Twenty.
And I, I would say, you know, some of your typical winter sports, basketball, hockey, um, you know, the state has, uh, created a continuum of sports that it believes are safe to engage in, and right now, basketball is not one of them. And I'm pretty sure, uh, in terms of competition, you can do skills and drills, but competing, no. Um, and I believe hockey and wrestling is another one, are also in the same category. So, I mean, what, what, it, it'll be a waiting game as we get closer to um, to that, that season, to, to even find out whether or not uh, those competitions can happen, period.
Okay, and, you know, I want to make it clear to a lot of people that are probably listening that, um, y- and you made it clear, Dr. Tutwiler, that MIAA and DESI determine, as well as if we are a red spot, and we are. And, um, a lot of the athletes out there that really want to play and see their sports, I think they really need to step up and, and start role modeling and, you know, showing others and following what needs to be followed for the COVID, so that we can get the numbers down. I passed a, um, basketball court today, and honestly, it was way over what the number should have been. You know, it's, it's pretty hard to stop, stop them from doing it, but they have to understand that, you know, they need to be part of it also, everybody's here in Lin is going to have to step forward and do it, but, you know, if the athletes can be role models and, you know, encourage their peers, we can all get to that point where all of these athletic, uh, programs will be in effect.
Great.
Thank you, member Capola, member Nicholson, and member Sadway.
Thank you, thank you for that, those updates, um, totally agree with what my colleagues have been saying about the importance of thinking about this and figuring this out. Uh, one, one question I had, if if we think, I, and I, I agree with the sentiment that's been echoed, I think the mayor mentioned, others might as well, that, that it doesn't, you're not seeing the logic of, of tying what we decide to do for inside our buildings with activities that happen exclusively outside the buildings, um, if we think there are sports, especially sports that our NEC counterparts are moving forward with this fall, if we think that we could do it well, I, I think that we, we need to share that feedback with the MIAA, understanding that they, they, they have made these decisions, I mean, I think it's incumbent on us if we think it's not the right decision for us to share that, that feedback, and so I, I'd ask our A.D.s to, to think about that, um, but also agreeing sort of with the, the creative thinking about how to salvage those seasons that would be uh, difficult to, um, begin in, in, in February, um, and totally understand about the wrestling, unfortunately, that's really hard to do, socially distant, um, but, uh, I, I do think that's important that we give that feedback to the MIAA, because it, it doesn't make sense, um, for, for to, to use what, what we decide to do insider buildings to govern what happens outside our buildings. Um, although I totally agree, we need to put safety first, uh, and we'll, and we'll support that. The, the other thing I wanted to say about, um, the, eh, along, uh, member Castellanos's point about the, the mentors and, and what you were talking about with the virtual coaching, uh, we have made, I think, some great progress in the district in, uh, setting up study halls for athletes and using that community to support, uh, uh, using the athletic community to support education and then led by uh Anthony Seiforth and, 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 and his, and his work there. Uh, is, what role is there for that to continue, given, given the relationship that that group has built with students and, and, and helping them access technology and learning and keeping them on track?
So I would say, I, I would zoom out from that specific program, um, which, uh, has been successful in many ways over, I believe it's, uh, maybe four years. Um, we, we're really bringing as many resources to bear on student, uh, learning, student social, emotional wellness, on student physical wellness, uh, as possible. Uh, and so we are not, uh, just because we are starting in remote learning or just because we are, uh, you know, a community that's in the red, uh, you know, simply turning away from, uh, programs and offerings and supports that kids have enjoyed, uh, for years, uh, and so we just need to do them differently. Uh, and, and so, and that means, you know, virtually, uh, for now, uh, or maybe in small groups if it's outside, um, outside of a building. Uh, but there's absolutely a role for that program to play in keeping kids connected and supporting them through, um, you know, a, a learning approach that, um, we've not yet done in this district. Uh, there's absolutely a role to play.
Thank you.
Member Sadoway, then Member Ford.
Thank you, um, Dr. Tuttwiler. Uh, I just wanted to, um, I guess emphasize what my, uh, fellow school community members are saying. And I, I think that we, we need to, to send a message to M I A A and D E S I and let them know that sports and other a- after school activities play a vital role in districts like ours. They go beyond play. You know, there's a component in the mix where it's like mentorships that's, are important. And if you think of the social workers and the counselors that, that we employ and we are going to continue to employ, a key component that they play in our students' lives is a mentor. So, you know, not every student's going to go to a social worker or, or a school counselor. They might go to their coach. So, and they're going for, you know, similar reasons where they, they need that guidance or that mentor, uh, level. And that's where coaches and, and other people in our, our school district play a key component. So, um, you know, we have a unique district. Um, I think that districts like, uh, are to be hit hard when students, um, don't have that, that, that false board with, with those, uh, with those interactions that are, that are very much needed. And so if we can continue, um, with these, these mentorships and make sure that the students are, are having, you know, accessibility to these, these wonderful people that, that come in and do, do our, our city justice, I, I'd like to see that. Um, you know, again, it, it goes beyond play. And I know that that's what, um, what people think, hey, it's just a sport. No, it's not just sport. You know, it, it goes well beyond that. And there are other activity, after school activities that don't involve sports that I think still, uh, students will get that mentorship, that, um, they won't seek any other, any other place. Thank you.
Number Ford.
I, I just, I guess I want to echo what everybody's been saying. Just to, to pick an example, Matt Dergan, I think when kids see him 20, 25 years after he's coached them, he's still a high coach, yes, coach, the mentorship and the respect goes on for a lifetime. I think it's very important to put that and keep that in these kids' lives. And I just got one, one thing I was confused about. We're looking at basketball from November 30th to the end of February, mid February, like it's the normal season. But if that doesn't make it by November 30th, it really has no place to go. It can't go into the fall two, because it will overlap football. And it can't go into the, the summer schedule, because it'll overlap baseball. Kids won't be able to play, you know, all three sports or two sports. So basketball could be a problem, correct?
Could. It absolutely could. Uh, I would say, uh, just about all of the winter sports that, uh, are in the states, you know, sort of on, on the, you know, more dangerous side of their continuum, basketball, uh, hockey, wrestling, those, those, yeah. I mean, we'll, 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 we'll keep our fingers crossed if the state moves, uh, in a direction where, uh, you know, the health and safety is at a point where the powers that be feel like that competition in those sports is safe. But right now, it's not.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. And just to follow up again, it's, it's up to all of us to really continue to bring this, the, this virus down, the spread of the virus down, and it's not just here in Lynn. We need to really, as a community and as a Commonwealth, continue to recognize that the, the impact stretches across so many different places. Obviously, the health and safety and the impact on the community has been pretty devastating. But it's, it, it also impacts students and student athletes and, and students that do, uh, music and, and the other types of after school activities that are just as important to those students. So it's, it really is, uh, uh, tough to be dealing with all of this. And, and again, it really is important that we follow the guidelines and really work hard as a community to continue to do the things that will limit the spread in the city of Lynn. Uh, and, um, and, and so I just want to continue to send that message. We really can set our own destiny as a community and we need to work together to make that happen. So I appreciate all the comments tonight and, uh, we'll continue these discussions as we move forward. Next on the agenda, uh, is, um, two separate requests to go into executive session. Uh, and I'd be looking for a motion to, uh, uh, make those, uh, let's, uh, Member Sadoway.
I make a motion, uh, to go into executive session to discuss the contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Executive Director of English Learner Education, Reina Caldwell, and to go into executive session to discuss the strategies with respect to the collective bargaining relative to the Lynn Teachers Union Local 1037 and the Administrators Association contracts.
Is, uh, is there a second?
Okay, okay.
Second requires a roll call.
Oh, I think it's on mute.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nick, Dan, you may be on mute, man.
I don't even know.
Yeah, I see her. She's on. Nan, you, uh, quick.
Yep, she's, she's, um, off mute. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Castellanos, yes. Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Sadoway?
Yes.
Hannah G.
Yes.
Dr. Tuttwiler, you will bring us into executive session.
So.
Motion to return to regular session.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call required.
And Nan, you'll have to unmute.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yep, yes.
I don't understand how to do that. All right. Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
And Sadoway?
Yes.
Hannah G.
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Thank you, um, uh, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, like to have a motion, uh, to ratify the votes taken in exec, executive session and the signing of the contract for Executive Director of English Learner Education for Reina Caldwell in the ratific, uh, to ratify the votes taken with regards to the Lynn Teachers Union Local 1037 and the Administrators Association contracts, where all contracts, uh, were approved, uh, and as of, as they were presented.
There's a motion on the floor?
Second.
There's a second? Uh, roll call is required.
Ms. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
And Hannah G.
Yes.
So, so the, the English Learner Contract is on Dot Loop? And I, I emailed it to all of you.
Michael, can you send me the signed contracts?
Of course.
Thank you.
Jared, I have yours signed. Thank you. Brian, I have yours signed. Thank you.
Do you have mine?
Um, not yet. Let me double check. Make sure you click the finish, uh, button at the top after you.
Do you have it now?
I do.
Should I come over now?
Michael, did you get mine?
Um, I haven't. Make sure you click on the finish button at the top right hand corner after you sign it. Otherwise it won't get sent to me.
The finish button?
Yep, so at the top.
So it's saying, I mean, one field missing?
So that means you didn't sign.
I'm doing click here. And it keeps flashing.
Interesting.
I'm clicking the signature and it's not.
So I'll, I'll resend it to you. Uh, Mayor, I got yours. Thank you. And I'm just waiting on Donna and, um, and John. Donna, if you don't have it, I can resend it to you too.
You have it now? Because?
Let me see. One second. So Donna, I don't have yours yet. Make sure you hit the finish button at the top.
Did you get it, Mike?
I did. Okay. What was, what, what happened? What was the issue?
I don't know. I closed it out. I opened it up again. It worked. Okay.
Michael, did you get mine?
I'm, I'm going to double check. One second. Still no, Donna.
Right, why don't you send it again then?
Okay. Patrick, uh, the other two, um, can you send to Mary once you sign them?
Certainly.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the other three. Donna, uh, let me know. Sorry, and, uh, Dr. Tuttwiler. Um, and Donna, if you can double check that you received the, the most recent email, that'd be great. I'm going to check. One second. We are all set. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Tuttwiler, uh, the, we've finished all the agenda. You have, um, what? Superintendent's report? Or have we? Okay?
You don't want to hear from me, man?
Absolutely. I've been waiting all night for this moment in the, in the meeting.
All right, very good. Well, yeah, I just want to, I, you know, we, we just kept, um, uh, seven days, actually eight day, eight, eight, almost eight days of, of professional learning. Uh, and I want to congratulate Lynn Public School staff. They've been working incredibly hard, scaling up, uh, in Schoology, uh, engaging in the trauma responsive, uh, professional development, English Learner Education, professional development. Uh, we're, we're definitely, uh, moving in the right direction here. Uh, all of this is new and we've engaged in a processes, we've engaged in processes that essentially involve rebuilding, reshaping and reimagining teaching and learning from the ground up. I'm inviting the community as a whole, educators, learners and partner family members alike, to embrace the reality that there will be challenges in the early going of the school year. We're sweating every detail and preparing in every way possible. However, with so many new systems, structures and processes, all developed on a very tight timeline, challenges are the inevitable. We're entering this, uh, with this mindset, but also with a solid commitment and support resources to rectify issues expeditiously. We're approaching the school year expecting challenges and preparing for them at the same time. We're also prioritizing certain aspects of our work to start the year, aspects that are foundational. For example, we know that if there are challenges around access to technology, internet connection or attendance issues, the professional learning that's happening around evolved practices of teaching and learning will be for naught. Accordingly, we, we've established two goals for the first three weeks of the school year. First and foremost, by October 9th, we expect that 100% of students will have access to an internet connected device in their home and are able to access Schoology, our learning management system. Second, by the week ending October 9th, it's actually the same week, uh, we expect the average daily attendance district wide to be 95% or higher. Both goals are ambitious. However, we know that if they're not achieved, student learning will suffer. Finally, relative to the, the first goal around technology, we've been working to establish a means by which, uh, students in grades K to 2 can access a device. Building principals who've been, let me salute them, they've, they've been working really, really hard, uh, have been engaging in a rigorous outreach protocol determined, uh, to identify which K to 2 families do not have a device. That effort, uh, identified a need for 800 devices. We have enough devices to satisfy, to satisfy that need in the short term. We'll provide a district, uh, device to families who begin the year using their own device when they arrive. In short, I'm saying, uh, all students will have a device when we start the school year, and we're excited about that. That's, that's a good note to end on right there, Mayor.
Well, that's, um, great, great news and a great presentation.
Thank you.
So, uh, thank you for all the hard work, uh, that's going into, uh, getting the, the school year ready to move forward. So thank you on everyone that's working hard on it. Staff, teachers, um, um, ready to move forward. That's great. Uh, uh, Member Sadoway.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler, so I, I, I love the report. I love the update. Um, but don't forget I'm a parent. So my issue is, it's been a long period of time since March. And, uh, my daughter got her laptop, um, maybe a month and a half ago. And, uh, she can't log into one of the, uh, things she needs to log into. But you call the help desk and they have a voicemail that says they're out for three weeks. And then you call Pickering and, uh, they say, well, you're like the 40th person they called today. We don't, we can't give you any help here. We have to send you to, uh, to the I T department to, to, to correct whatever login issue you have. So what are we doing to address that issue?
So, um, the login issue is the one that is most widespread, uh, amongst students. Uh, and, uh, I think everybody on this call knows that we are woefully understaffed, uh, in the I T department. We've hired, and Kevin will have, have to keep me honest here, I think, four or five additional I T techs, uh, to support the need. We've shifted around, uh, our Title I funds to support, uh, two positions to, to help, uh, families and, um, and through a degree staff with Schoology. Um, this is part of what I was talking about in that report. There are going to be challenges. We're going to have to grow into excellence. It won't be excellent in the very beginning. Um, this is all new. Um, there, we, we don't have a budget yet even. Um, so, um, there are going to be wrinkles. There's going to be bumps. Um, I, I, I can't speak to, uh, the voicemail that, uh, that you heard that said we're, we're out for three weeks. But I can tell you that that I T department is bending over backwards. They're working six days a week. They're here on Saturdays doing device distribution, uh, working on addressing, uh, issues with families. It's, it's going to be tough. Uh, I, I wouldn't, uh, at all set up a, or convey any, anything different. And so, uh, I, I would say this is where that patience is going to, going to need to reign supreme. Um, I would say, you know, again, I, I don't know why the, the, the voicemail, uh, was that. But, um, if you send a, uh, uh, an email to service desk and get an automatic reply, I'm copied on a number of those responses, they do get back. They're working. Um, and they're trying to get, uh, you know, that's why we have that goal of 100% connected, uh, by the third week. Uh, they're trying to get as many families hooked up and set up as possible, as quickly as they can. But you're talking about, um, maybe 11 people and, um, 17, 19,000 devices out there. Uh, they're outnumbered. So, um, that's where we are.
Okay. And there's, there won't be a point where you would, uh, maybe go to, um, like manpower, you know, those temp agencies with, with people with I T background to kind of just be there for a period of time to get everyone on their feet? Well, because you want to have a budget, you couldn't do that.
Uh, I, I, that's something we can look into. Uh, but, but my, my general understanding is what it takes to get folks, um, skilled up, uh, and trained and understanding, by that point, you know, you, you're, you know, many of the issues would, would have been rectified. But, but that's something we can look into.
Okay, thank you.
Member Gately, then Member Nicholson.
Um, Dr. Tuttwiler, on the K through 2, uh, devices.
Dr. Tuttwiler, on the K through 2 devices, are they the laptops? Did we get the new laptops for K through 2? Or are we doing, what kind of devices are we using?
So we are allocating, we just received a shipment of iPads. It was ordered back in June, just to give you a sense for how long it takes things to get here. And between that shipment and the existing iPads in the district, we think we can take care of our younger students, our kindergartners who, you know, for whom that sort of device is more appropriate. And then we believe that we, when we, you know, I've been talking about, we have enough devices for K to 12, excuse me, 3 to 12, each student to have one. There's a cushion built into that, you know, for devices to get lost, devices to get damaged. And essentially what we're doing, we've identified who needs one in the short term and we're using those new devices for those families until the ones that we've ordered come in.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Member Nicholson.
Thank you, thank you for that update, Dr. Tuttwiler. I was wondering if it'd be possible to, I think those metrics are perfect. And I was wondering if we could, one of the metrics we talked about last time that we thought would be possible was also the percentage of families from whom we've gotten a response as far as the communication, would that be possible to track as well and report out on?
I think you're talking about, if I remember correctly, in Schoology, the number of families who, like, or adults, parents, guardians, who've logged in and are accessing information on that platform, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, Schoology's fine, I mean, if possible, there'd be a way to add other systems as well. But I mean, even if you were just to send out a message and say, parent guardian, please confirm that you're able to receive these communications to get that response back and see what that is. Because I think that would be, we could focus on those areas where we want to get that number up as a way to improve communication families.
No doubt.
That's great, and then on the, for the IT team, I think this is something that I've been, you know, apprehensive about as well as I think we all are. And I got a question this afternoon from a Spanish-speaking family. Does the IT team have the Spanish language capability?
That has been a focal point of the hiring of the new IT members. Kevin's on the call and he can keep me honest with how many are Spanish-speaking. I believe it's three or four now, and then the new hires, Kevin, can you keep me honest?
Yeah, we have, we have, we're going to have right now five on staff at this point. We actually have a new person starting next Monday that's fluent in Spanish. And we have been talking to some other people. As the superintendent said, it's been a real focus of the new hires that we, you know, have that ability. Because as he was talking about, and I think as member Sadoway brought up, we know it's going to be all hands on deck on the help desk next week because that's going to be the big push. So we want to make sure we have as many people possibly to speak Spanish so they could deal with a parent or someone who has that capability and address their concerns quickly.
And then, just, that's really helpful, thank you for that. I wanted to ask, as you mentioned, Dr. Tuttwiler, about the lack of the budget. How are we guiding, how do we know how much we can spend on these new hires without having a budget for this year? How are we making those decisions about how we can prioritize these?
Kevin?
Well, as you heard him say, two of them are going to be going into a Title I grant. So that's what we're planning on doing. The others, we know we're going to be receiving additional funds. And, you know, we were planning on using some of those funds as far as going forward to handle that. And that would be in the formalized budget request that we get the number and putting them in and bringing it forward to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
And just also to add, if there are additional, we're looking to add more additional staff. Because as the superintendent said, we're up over 18,000 devices that are going to always have issues with day-to-day issues that we're going to have to keep maintaining. And at some point, our goal is to have almost like a staff person for all the larger buildings to be stationed there for, to access things quickly, you know what I mean? So you don't have to send a guy to drive over to a school. So we kind of have a long-term plan, we're trying to get it to.
Right, yeah, I mean, obviously, we would be able to know how much, how far we can go because the need is arriving very soon in terms of being able to answer those calls.
Yeah, this is the future and it's just got thrust upon us very quickly, that's all.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, that's our agenda for night, for tonight. Open for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call required?
Ms. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ford? Ms. Wade? Yep, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Sadoway?
Yes.
Hannah G.
Yes.